Steve, you want to start recording?
Aaron, you may begin.
All right. I'd like to call this council meeting to order the Fallcroft Borough Council at 7:00 PM on April 20th, 2021. And I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for the flag salute and indication. I'm going to turn my computer around so we get a view of the flag here.
As we've been doing, take a moment for the people that are still getting COVID lining up in the hospital and dying. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America, the republic for which it stands. One nation, united. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to turn it over to the borough manager for the roll call.
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters.
Here.
Councilwoman Linda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason Wigan. Councilman Jason Wigan. Alright, Councilman Wigan is absent currently. Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
I'm here.
Mayor Bob Fry.
Here.
Solicitor Alex Bandler.
Here.
And I am present. All right.
All right, Mr. Borough Manager, do we have anything from audience participation?
There was no audience participation for this meeting.
Okay, very good. Moving on to Ms. Catania for the engineer's report.
Thank you. We received plans for the Braun property for Lot Two Development, the Popeyes, for recording. However, unfortunately, they did not provide the necessary signatures on the actual grading plan. They gave me only the cover sheet that they were going to record. So hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have those and they'll be able to get started on on that particular project. The safe store is still under construction. Things are going pretty well. We haven't had any issues. When they first started, we had quite a few issues with erosion, sedimentation complaints, but that has really subsided. The Road Program 2021, we have the contracts. We should have gotten the check today according to PICO. However, I don't know that we have, but it is, it should be here any day if it wasn't here today. In doing that, in preparing for that particular project, we had given a map of the area to AF Damon. We're going to sit down with them, talk about their schedule so that we can put something out to the residents so that there's appropriate parking for residents while he's doing, not necessarily the milling, they'll have to move out of the way for the milling, but definitely the paving. There'll be a period that they won't be able to access the front of the property or quite frankly, use their back alleys if it enters or you exit onto one of the streets that we're doing. So we're working on that and as soon as I have that available, we were going to sit down with Andrew and figure out how to best get that out to the residents. When the contractor does start, he will be putting notifications. We have a flyer that we ask the contractors part of the contract to put in everyone's front door so that they are aware of what's going on. And we'll have a copy of that particular notification for Andrew for the office and and the police department. So they're aware of what's going when. The Small Water and Soil Grant Program had several discussions with DCED concerning that. They will not give us an extension on that grant. Part of the issue is outstanding audits. If we can get the 2020 audit completed prior to June, they are willing to consider lifting the flag for that audit and they would be giving us a disbursement of that project funds. Speaking to Delcora, I thought this afternoon I would have the cost to put the flow meter in. Delcora has agreed that they'll take their forces to do that work since they have a maintenance contract with the borough. I haven't gotten that number yet, but I'm hoping to have that shortly. And I'll forward that to the appropriate people. We're still waiting on the contract execution and the schedule for the municipal complex. We're getting into a season that we should be under construction. So I'm hoping that we have that resolved shortly. Delcora has also sent us a copy of an I and I long-term reduction plan. That's part of their permit, their MPDES permit with the state. And there is I and I mitigation that will need to be completed. I haven't read through the report. It's about inch and a half to inches thick. I've got to get through that. And once I'll put a summary together so that everyone understands what it is that they're going to be asking of the municipalities that are members of Delcora. I also spoke to PennDOT concerning the Delmar Drive Hook Road Streetscape or greening up. And Vince had suggested to me, PennDOT is willing to have a meeting with either Fallcroft or Darby Township or both together. I think it would be much better off if we did it in a cooperative way with Darby Township. However, he suggested that we contact, and I haven't done so. I wanted to talk to you. I've already spoken to Darby Township. They are on board with getting PennDOT and DBR PC involved. DBR PC has two projects annually that they take on. Considering it would be Darby Township and and Fallcroft, we may have a better chance of getting one of those two grants that they do annually. Vince thought that they certainly would consider it because it was a cooperative project. So if everyone's okay with that, I'd like to contact DBR PC and get that started. If they're not interested, then I'm just going to set up a meeting with PennDOT. So we'll have a PennDOT representatives there to talk about greening up the area, signalization upgrades, those types of things that we've talked about in our previous meetings. Otherwise, the rest of the information that is on my report is information you've heard before. The Delco Greenways Grant, Andrew, I believe that a representative from Delaware County Planning Department called to determine whether or not where we were in the process. If you recall, we've received grant money from Delco Greenways, 25% of the total cost of the amphitheater that we had designed that's right next to the playground. So we have a master plan. That would be the next phase of the master plan. We've got to start looking at some point for additional funding. DCNR is a good one that we can take a look at. Pico Green Region, that's only a $10,000. So that's not going to put a dent in the money that we need for that project. I can report some of progress on the other items and I don't know whether we need to talk about the, we have an application for, this is from a zoning standpoint. We have an application from a woman who would like to put an event center in the Delmar Shopping Center. It is not an allowable use in that center. However, because an assembly is one of the uses, it's similar to what would be considered an assembly. So it would need to go through the planning commission and then there'd be a hearing before the Borough Council for any kind of approval. So that's pending. She put her application in sometime in February. We do need to get that on an agenda at some point. That's all I have. I'll answer any questions if anyone has anything.
Yes, firstly, Alex, do I need to get council's approval to have Lisa go ahead and reach out to DBR PC?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, I guess you could initiate communications with DBR PC. And I guess Darby Township to start, I guess, whatever sort of joint negotiations we could do if they're interested in a joint project. What sort of event center is proposed?
She was talking, she is an event planner and she'd like to have like small weddings and baby showers. And it's in a storefront. There is a packet of information at borough offices. Her name is Natasha White. She, it seems to me like she wants to do training sessions. So if there's somebody that's looking for a space to have a training session, they would be able to utilize her space. So she'd be renting out the space. Kind of a, I can't even call it a sublease, just an hourly rate or afternoon or evening. Somebody wants to get married there, she'd be able to have the wedding and the small reception there. But she wouldn't be able to tell you that better when she would have the hearing in front of council.
All right. Sounds good. Is that everything, Lisa?
That's all I've got.
All right, very good.
More than enough.
That's plenty. It's very good. All right, moving on to public finance and administration, I'd like to entertain a motion from the body of council to approve the bill list for the month of March 2021.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Like to entertain a motion for the body of council to approve the treasurer's report for the month of March 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion from the body of council to approve the March 2nd, 2021 workshop meeting minutes and the March 16th, 2021 council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to discuss dispersing $2,000 from the general fund to the Police Sunshine Fund, Police Department Sunshine Fund. Now, there's a little bit of backstory on this. So the police department rented to the county, one of the police department's vehicles for a sum of, I think, like over $10,000, maybe it was over $12,000. I'm not sure what the full sum was. The county dispersed that check back to the municipality. So this $2,000 really sort of, I would like it to be viewed as sort of shaving off the top of that, of that, the disbursement that the police department really earned from loaning a piece of their equipment to the county for a duration of time. Does anybody have any objection to that? Or would the chief like to add any information on that? Chief, are you with us?
Joe, yeah, no. So yeah, I'm good with that. I appreciate that. The Sunshine Club foundation is used for anybody that, anybody that we know that gets ill or someone in their family. It's used for buying flowers and stuff like that. That's what we use it for. We also use it for if anybody like years ago, it used to be if a child didn't have cleats for sporting events, we would buy cleats for them if we found that they were hurting for money. So we would do something like that with our sunshine club. So that's what it really is.
All right, and Alex, there's no, there's no legal prohibition against us dispersing that, correct?
No, as we discussed, I mean, it's borough's funds from the general. If you'd like to make a donation to that sunshine fund, that is within the council's discretion.
All right. So I would like to entertain a motion from the body of council to disperse a sum of $2,000 from our general fund to the police department's sunshine fund.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Willis for Public Works.
So a big thing for this section is I had asked Sean and Andrew to discuss a plan for presentation here about giving out or selling at cost or however they saw that would be the best way to do it. Cold patch for the driveways as has been done in years past. And so Andrew, would you go over the details that you and Sean had come up with for this idea here?
Sure. So I'm aware that we've done things like this previously. I spoke to a couple of other municipalities without buying pre-bag cold patch. It's going to be hard for us to actually sell the cold patch back to residents at exact cost. I was advised that it may just be best for us to purchase cold patch in bulk for $1,000 or something like that and then give it out to residents who provide identification at no cost. They can come and bring buckets down at Montgomery Park. Currently Sean is in the process of building a bin for this to go in. I think that's the word. But it's like, you know, like an area where that would be dumped and held on to at Montgomery Park at the pumping station. Residents could come down and collect it at specific times. Again, I think it shouldn't be unmanned. Otherwise, I'm concerned that people would just come and take it and use it all over the region. And this should be specifically for Fallcroft residents. We actually have a brand new truckload of cold patch right now in the garage in Fallcroft. So we could start this as soon as he completes that bin or as soon as you'd like, if you'd like it without the bin. So if you say.
Will the bin be under lock and key at the pump station or will it be loose in Montgomery Park?
So it would be under lock and key during evening hours, but we could have it open during, I would even say we could actually just set aside a day where people can come and get it and have Dan Falcone, if he's able man the event, just to make sure people's IDs are being checked. Right now, as we know, we're a bit short-staffed and dealing with cutting grass, it's going to be really hard to have a highway employee, since we only have two, checking IDs. I think that's not reasonable. I don't know who else we'd have down there unless you have a suggestion.
I actually think it's a great idea. Do you think Danny would be interested in working on Saturdays? Because here's the deal, people work. The best time for them to come collect their cold patch and apply it to their driveway is a Saturday morning, right?
Yeah.
So it might not be, I mean, it might not be feasible for a lot of working class people to get there on a weekday between, you know, and during, when our business hours end at four, right? I think highways ends at three. So.
I'm putting this in my notes to ask him. Yeah, I could ask him. I think that makes sense.
I highly think, I highly think somebody should be down there during that whole entire time for IDs being checked. I agree with Andrew. That you might have people in from other municipalities trying to get it. They get word. Or people just taking more than they should. And or people even afterwards is trying to, so I agree that it should be under lock and key after we close for the day for that. Because you don't want people to come in and get in the wrong stuff and trying to fix other things other than the driveway.
Right. So that's, I think, yeah, I think that's been established. I think we're, you know, we're certainly looking at that angle of it with supervision. I mean, here's the other factor. If we're already giving it away for free, it also now costs us in labor to have it monitored. So from a dollars and cents perspective, there's that angle of it too. I don't really mind if what we get out of that is residents who patch up holes in their driveway. It's, I'm not offended by that. I think it's another service that we offer to our residents for the duration of time between now and when we're paving the driveways for them. But if anybody other has an objection to that, it's certainly worth noting. So now would be the time to say it.
One thing I want to remind council members is that it's a very, it would be a very useful tool in getting residents to repair driveways without having to find people. So to allow them to divert and not have a fine or potential, you know, go to court, we give them the opportunity to repair it at no cost. So I think it'd be a very helpful tool in getting some of these things resolved.
I think you brought up a good, I think you brought up a good point, Joe, that it would be good. I was just thinking, I wasn't even thinking that aspect of like labor, having somebody there. Um, so as long as, I guess, as long as it's being used, it's being used.
Right. I mean, I think the borough spending 150 bucks on a Saturday to pay somebody to get, to help residents their driveways fixed. I mean, it's important that I shed light on that fact, but I don't have a problem with it. So I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but it's important that we, you know. What do you think, Kyle?
I think that this is kind of just a necessary, as you said, a stopgap between now and when we can get the, get the ball rolling on actually getting these driveways paved. I would, Andrew, if we do end up going with the non-bag version, if we can get Sean to put together some sort of brief set of instructions on how to use it properly, because those bags tend to come with instructions and without the bag, they won't have instructions. And I know, I don't know how to off the top of my head, apply cold patch. So if we can have like a piece of paper with some like, here's some.
Do's and don'ts.
Yeah, or that it gets applied properly. That way it works and it's not a waste of money. Just as a thought. But yeah, I think, I think it's the best, the best go around for us right now. And and that can also, if we don't end up dispersing all of it, if we keep it in a locked box and it stores well enough, and that's something to ask Sean, it can be kept for when a ticket is issued and someone wants to divert, we can also use it in the future to kind of as a stopgap at Andrew's kind of discretion, like we've been doing other things with tickets as well. So.
I'd even say if we have the time, a fun little how-to tutorial video spread across all social media forums if people, if people deep, I mean, I think it's useful.
Absolutely.
Is that for all Fallcroft also? Our driveways, like you know, ours are, you drive up in it and.
And we're not going to tell any Fallcroft resident now. You know what I mean? Is that about right, Kyle?
I mean, I wasn't, I hadn't even really considered it. As long as our Fallcroft resident, this is coming out of the entirety of Fallcroft's tax money. So it's not unlike the driveway restoration program, which is meant to be kind of self-contained to just people with common driveways. This is just a general fund expenditure.
So we couldn't, I don't think we could tell people. Yeah. So that's a fair point. All right. Do we need a motion or anything for that tonight?
You could authorize me to purchase $1,000 in cold patch. We already have the cold patch, but really the $1,000 would be replacing what we already have, which we already use to repair, you know, minor potholes in old Fallcroft particularly right now.
How much does $1,000 get us?
About two truckloads from what I understand.
All right.
So, yeah, I would like to make a motion for the borough to purchase $1,000 with cold patch to disperse to residents at no charge.
All right, motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carry.
Otherwise, that is all I have prepped up for this meeting, for this section.
Real quick, who seconded that motion? All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, moving on to public safety, Councilman Ruskowski.
Motion to approve the police chief's report for the month of March 2021.
So moved.
No, we need a second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. And all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the borough chief's report for the month of March 2021.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Motion to approve the borough market report for the month of March 2021.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on to public health literacy, Councilwoman Isaac.
Yes, I like to discuss the clock tower. Um, we have gotten some quotes. To fix the electrical work, it would be like 4,725,000 and 25,566 for the chime. Lisa, we were talking briefly about this before we started the meeting, has mentioned that the people that did the work before, that they would come back and fix. If I understood that correctly, Lisa. So my suggestion is we hold off on that to, and.
So I think, I think what Lisa was describing was, so the work that they're coming to fix, I think the lighting that's discussed, Lisa's discussed, it doesn't appear to be the same, the same lighting features that are measured in, I'm sorry, that aren't measured, that are mentioned in this, this estimate. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor. Do you have the, because you have a little bit of familiarity with it as well. Lisa, do you have the proposal in front of you as well?
It's two different.
What's that?
It's two different things. I was talking about the ground outlets that were put in, not the clock tower, nothing. Ground outlets have nothing to do with the clock tower lighting.
So are we talking about lighting on the ground level of the clock tower, Lisa?
That's correct.
All right. So it looks like this proposal mentions the installation of lighting at the, the.
It's, it's two different, totally different scopes of work.
Okay. So we could, we could technically proceed with the scope of work without postponing and still have Mecca, hold Mecca to, you know, his efforts to correct old work, correct? Right? The two don't necessarily interfere with one another.
No.
Okay. All right. So to answer your question, Mindy, I do think, I mean, you can, I mean.
Well, what do we, what do we have in the clock tower fund then? Because I forget what.
Something to the tune of $360,000, but is that, is the, is our treasurer on the, on the call?
Yeah. So the clock tower fund has $474,000 in it.
Oh, well then we got a lot. Okay.
Is that right?
I must have misunderstood. I'm at work too.
It had a very good year of gains in 20, yeah, yeah. So we updated it through and we put it, it's actually on the balance sheet. I think you guys got a copy of the balance sheet, but the account is on the balance sheet now. And we set up like a fund for it. So clock, clock tower fund, C-Biz, I and R is the name of the accountants under the checking savings. Yeah. So there's a lot of cash in there.
Okay, there was a good yield. So I think, I mean.
Okay, yeah, definitely. We got enough.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely. Yeah, I certainly applaud your legality, but I think, I think we can do this.
Math and biz and all that kind of stuff aren't my thing. So I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Plus working a full-time job and other job and businesses, it's like trying to get everything in my head and get it together. So I like to make the motion to approve for us to spend 4,000, 7,200 or 25 for the electrical work in the clock tower and 5,660 for the chime, to fix the chime.
Let me just restate the motion. The motion was for $4,725 for clock tower work with Mecca Electrical. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe so. I don't have my agenda with me. I'll have to start printing that out. I apologize.
Okay. So here's what I'll do. I'll, I'd like to entertain a motion from the body of council to approve an agreement to repair the clock tower with Mecca Electric for $4,725. The scope of work is included in the supporting documents that were sent to all council members before the meeting.
Over or something?
I'm sorry, does someone, does someone have something to say in the background there? In regards to the clock tower? No? Okay. So again, I'd like to solicit from the body of council a motion to approve repairs to the clock tower from the clock tower fund in the amount of $4,725 for Mecca Electric. in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for Mecca Electric, the terms of which are included in the supporting documents sent prior to the meeting. Can I have a motion?
So I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'd like to, I'd like to request a motion from the body of council to approve an agreement to replace the chime mechanism at the clock tower. And that agreement is with Elder Horse Bells Incorporated for an amount of five thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to municipal planning and zoning, Councilman Waters.
And that's all that I had for that area too, anyway. So just that I didn't have anything else for health and literacy safety.
Thank you, ma'am.
Except everybody is now eligible for vaccines. Get registered if you haven't. If you got first shot for sec and second, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving on to Councilman Waters. Anything for, uh, municipal planning and zoning?
I think yes, I do. So I have a application for charter, excuse me, for the charter school. This is on the board meeting, appearing actually, uh, April twenty-third. So we know that.
Uh, that's April twenty-eighth, Councilman Waters.
Is that the twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
Does council have any bearing on this?
Is that close? I'm sorry, Joe.
Does council have any, actually Alex, my question is can council affect anything in a, I mean, it's, it's, because I'll be honest with you, I really don't want a charter school clogging up the main ordeal, only other main arterial in our township or in our, in our borough during school hours. So in the morning, we're now going to expect residents who are detouring away from school lane to get out of the village to now have to find some other detour away from Grant Road because that charter school is going to be admitting or, or, or releasing students between the hours of X and Y in the course of a day. I don't want it. Is there anything we can do?
Yeah. I mean, so I, I'm going to actually speak with your zoning hearing board solicitor tomorrow on this because the more I dug into the application, it's interesting that this, uh, was sent before the ZHB on an alternate for a special exception when under the ordinance, the use that's proposed for this vision charter academy is not permitted. Um, and therefore, uh, technically under the section, it should have been, uh, a conditional use. So quite frankly, I'm kind of at a loss as to why it went, uh, to the ZHB to begin with. So I'm going to speak with the solicitor tomorrow and see if we can get, uh, the applicant basically to agree to, um, an extension of the ninety day approval deadline and get this before you as a council, uh, on a conditional use. Uh, I would caution, um, that you, uh, as a council, don't personally express your opinions as to how you, uh, are going to vote on this matter, obviously, until the conditional use application is before you and the evidence and the testimony is presented by the applicant.
I stand corrected.
That's fine. That's fine.
No way should that be construed to be any indication of how I might vote on the matter.
No, no, we got to get this before you guys. And I mean, the applicant, of course, will have a full and fair and unbiased hearing. Um, and then a vote by you guys as well, uh, on the matter. So, uh, yeah, very confusing. I, I think the initial application came in and quite frankly, the attorney for the charter academy didn't know what he was requesting. I think that's why I'd end up going to the ZHB rather than you guys, but uh, regardless, this application should be in front of you on a conditional use. So, uh, we're going to try to straighten that out. Um, if not, then I'll have to go before the zoning hearing board and basically request a continuance of the hearing from the twenty-eighth, um, until we can get it straightened out. If we don't get it straightened out by next Wednesday. So that's kind of what's going on with that. Uh, so in theory, what I would like to do, because the applicant, of course, is probably already at this point to present their their application before the ZHB is to have the conditional use hearing on May twenty-fifth before you guys, uh, if we can get it done. And then of course I'll consult with Lisa, you know, to look at the plans and all that kind of stuff, but to kind of give you guys just a summary of what's going on, but remember, you know, you'll be the judge and jury, uh, while you're sitting there, uh, and I'll be running the hearing on the twenty-fifth. But, uh, you know, I will not be personally asking questions of the applicants. We will be, um, you know, your task is members to do so. So that, that in a nutshell is what's going on with that. And, uh, I will follow up as I have more details.
Alex, where's the charter school going to be at? Where's the charter school going to be at?
My understanding is that the, 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 the site that it's, that's proposed is where the old fabric warehouse used to be. And I think it will extend to where the old archery was. Lisa, am I correct?
Um, I believe so. I don't know that I've seen that application. I'd have to check the office to see if it came in.
Mayor, I think it says eighteen thirty Delmore Drive on the application or eighteen hundred Delmar technically, and it's units twenty and twenty-two.
I mean, it's also less than a couple hundred feet away from a, a bar. Um, I mean, I don't, you know, I just wanted to put, not that that should indicate in any way how I feel about the project, but, uh, I just wanted to put that out there as well.
That building there, the fabric place, Joe?
Yes.
That was infested or whatever you want to call it with black mold. I don't know if you ever cleaned it up or not. So that's, that's something to look at too in the plans.
I believe there was some, was there some, well, I don't know if I can say that. I don't know if there was some other rate on remediation in that area. I don't know if that was the specific building, but I mean, I don't know. I mean, I have to look back through the, the records. I'm operating off sheer memory here, but, uh, I think that might at some point have been some sort of a, a matter. Um, but, um, I, I, you know, we have to, I can't confirm that for sure. So, um, yeah.
Again, Lisa, you know, I'll send you the application, the pack of the materials that I have, and she'll take a look at it and kind of make you aware of the council as kind of the, you know, the issues and the things that you should be looking out for, including potentially the suspenses issue as well.
All right. Uh, thank you, Councilman Waters and, and Mr. Bomler. Appreciate it. Solicitor Bomler and the feedback. Uh, do you have anything else, Councilman Waters?
No.
No. All right. Um, actually there was something that you and I wanted to talk about. Let's put it, we'll put it under new business.
That's what I was going to go. I was going to wait.
Okay. Okay. All right. Moving on to public parks and recreation, Councilwoman Daly.
Uh, Joe, before we, am I still, no, good. Before we move, before we move on from the section, uh, there was just one other thing, uh, Councilman Waters, you wouldn't be aware of this, but I'll just help, uh, out in the section. Um, so over the last week or so, we kind of went back and forth, myself and Andrew with an applicant for, uh, the property at five forty, five forty-two Falkroft Avenue. I think we had mentioned this briefly at our last meeting that, um, the application had come in and we have deemed it administratively complete as of April sixth. This is for, uh, it looks like a subdivision and some townhomes, if everybody recalls. Um, so anyway, uh, long story short, the checks came in, uh, from the applicant and we've asserted a position that the full package was finally submitted on April sixth, which means you guys are going to have a land development approval resolution to consider. Um, I know Andrew is going to assemble the planning commission very soon to look this over. Um, so theoretically we can get this on the books for May twenty-fifth, uh, you know, to have that, uh, entertaining as well by you guys, um, worst case scenario. The first meeting in June, if not, but just be aware that that would come in too. So this is land development rather than, you know, approving the use. So, you know, obviously the use has been approved at the location. It's just that the plan needs of course to either be approved. So essentially the same thing, um, but just be aware that that will also be on either May twenty-fifth or the first meeting in June.
All right. Very good. Is that everything for, uh, municipal planning and zoning?
That's everything I had.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to public parks and recreation. I'm sorry for the interruption. I apologize. Moving on, I can turn it over to Councilwoman Daly.
Uh, I apologize. I am in the car at a baseball practice, so I do not have my agenda on me. I know that I am, uh, considering uh, pricing for trees to be cut back at Montgomery Park. And we all were given the different, um, bids. I don't have them with me because I'm on my phone. I don't know if Andrew, you have the numbers and who bid what, if you can read that for me?
Yeah. Give me one second. I'll open it up.
I apologize.
All right.
Double duty, being a mom and a councilperson.
So I, I sent these, uh, out to council members. They, I combined them into a singular document. Um, one is Hagerty's Landscaping Designs LLC. Um, it's an amount of forty-seven hundred dollars. This is for, uh, restoring the playground area, specifically the playground area will be sprayed with weed vegetation killer to control any new growth. Once this is done, they will install a commercial grade landscape fabric with twelve inch geotextile pin along the granular weed preen. The final phase will be to install the playground wood chips that will be supplied by Falkroft Borough. We also have a quote from Drake, uh, Jake's Tree Service. This is for the trimming of all trees, the backsides of the driveway into the walk, hanging over the street. The removal of vines around the streetlight and pole and the removal of dead, dead and down tree wrapped in vines at the end of the road. The thin out elevate lightly dead wood for locust trees behind park equipment. That's a total of three thousand dollars. Um, we got a quote from Anthony's T- Tree Service to trim trees at the entrance of the park, both sides of the interest. This is the same, same product for thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, and we have a quote from Britton Industries. Last but not least, this is the, uh, this is for a hundred cubic yards of IPEMA certified playground mulch. Um, it's twenty dollars, ninety-five cents a cubic yard and a hundred yards. That comes out to, um, hold on a second. So that comes out to, so there's three different prices here. Burke Supply would be three thousand dollars delivered. Britton Industries is two thousand ninety-five dollars delivered and Holland Materials is two thousand dollars delivered. And I recommend council go with the two thousand dollar option and, uh, as it's cheapest, obviously.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm cool with the two thousand dollar option. The, uh, Councilwoman Daly, if you want to make that motion.
So Andrew, I just want to make clarification that the two thousand dollars is for just the mulch or the tree removal also?
Just the mulch.
Just the mulch. The two thousand dollars is for the mulch. It's for a hundred cubic yards of mulch. Um, and then the tree removal, we have two quotes for tree removal. That's three thousand dollars from Jake's Tree Service and thirty-five hundred from Anthony's Tree Service. So those are the only two that there's actually two quotes on here.
Who's Hagerty's? What are they doing?
Uh, that's, that's to restore the playground area. So that's to, uh, spray the area to kill the weeds, to put down the vapor barrier um, and pre- prepare everything else that needs to be put in there and then.
Sean and I spoke about the vapor barrier being kind of important. Lisa, you might be able to input as to how important that is withholding the mulch, keeping the weeds from, uh, making the mulch disappear and degrade fast.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilwoman. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. I, I was actually writing something. Um, I, we need to make sure that the, that the weed killer that they're using, remember children are on this playground. So we've got to be actually careful of what kind of weed killer they're going to be utilizing. That ground cover, um, is, is, or that ground color cover killer, say that three times fast, um, is, uh, is of a concern. We need to make sure that it's safe for, for children and pets, quite frankly, like more, more so the children. In my case, I'd rather. Um, so if you can repeat that, I will, um, certainly try to answer you.
That's okay. Sean and I have discussed, um, the barrier being important, uh, to keep the wood chips from degrading the, is there an issue that we should not or we should? I'm not sure the other companies are offering that.
There, there's a couple of reasons for putting the barrier down. The most prevalent reason is to try to keep the weeds from coming up through. So that barrier has a specific side that you put it on so that the weeds cannot come through it, but the water can go down through it. So we need to make sure that's, that's appropriate uh, to that specific use because some of the filter fabric that you see is not that particular fabric. The other thing that, um, we did at the, at your current, at the new playground is we actually put a drainage system in. Because of the nature of mulch, it is going to deteriorate.
Right.
Um, the less water that's near it, um, the less deterioration you're going to see. And, and obviously mold spores is an issue. The engineered mulch that you should be utilizing, um, is, is a safety mulch. So it's, it's engineered so that it does not get mold spores in it. Um, obviously when you've, when you've put a lot of water in, you're still going to have some issues with mold and mildew. So, um, there are some, some precautions that you want to take. You definitely want to put the, um, the barrier down. You just need to make sure it's the right one.
Right. So I'm okay with considering, I apologize, the trees getting cut back. But I definitely think we need to check and make sure the mulch that we're picking is the right kind and not just picking the cheapest one. Does, is that?
I think, no, I think that's it. I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair point. Um, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, anything with roundup in it is, is a, is a non-starter for me. I think we should ban it everywhere in the town. But, um, I think I'm glad, I'm glad that you brought that up.
I know Sean did his research and I know Sean is well-versed in playground mulch and he assured me that he was, you know, doing all the things that we needed to do. But I just want to make sure before we vote that we, that we are picking the right thing and not just going with the cheapest. And I can't tell from what he gave us if they're comparable, if it's the same mulch or, or what, or if the barrier is the proper barrier. So for me, I'm not, I don't know if we should be voting on that tonight, but I am okay with, um, making a motion to accept the lowest bid, which I don't remember, Andrew, you might have told me, for the trees to be cut back.
That would be three thousand dollars with, hold on, I just clicked out of it.
Sorry.
Hold on a moment. Sorry about that. I should have, I wish I remembered the name offhand. Three thousand dollars with Jake's Tree Service.
So I would make a motion to accept the bid from Jake's Tree Service of three thousand dollars for trees to be cut back around Montgomery Park.
We have a, we have a second. Motion's made. We have a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I don't know if I have to table the, I know motion was made, so I don't have to table anything, right, Alex?
Well, I think, I, I think we could authorize an expense up to a certain amount. Am I right, Alex?
Oh, I'm muted again. Yeah, you can do that tonight if you'd like without selecting the particular vendor. But you would just leave the agenda on the item and quote unquote table it and then just revisit it at your next meeting.
I, I mean, I would like to get the mulch in sooner than later. So if we can approve up to a certain amount, I would appreciate that. And then we can just double check, cross our I's and dot our Ts and opposite of that, because I'm tired. But make sure that we're Lisa's, uh, concerns are met, my concerns are met before we decide.
Uh, Alex, could, could council members theoretically approve an expense up to and including three thousand dollars for a hundred cubic yards of mulch for this project contingent upon engineer Lisa Catania? Um, approving the type of mulch and then authorize me to select the lowest bid approved. So if all three bids are considered okay, um, then you authorize me to spend the two thousand dollars on the lowest amount. And if it's the middle option, twenty-five hundred, and if it's the most expensive option, three thousand. Could, but you're still gonna have to select a vendor, right? So, I mean, you're going to be back here in thirteen days uh, at your next meeting. I mean, you know, authorize the expenditure to go out and get the quotes now, but if you're going to consider multiple vendors still, then, you know, the council will still have to approve that for next meeting. So I don't think we need, you know, the extensive language, uh, in that motion.
Let me ask you this. To what extent, uh, do these companies specialize in the dispersment of mulch for playgrounds? Do they, did, did it, like, did you tell them what the mulch was going to be for?
Sean did, yes. Sean did, yes.
So my, my assumption would be that i- in the, the best interest of their own professional reputation, that if Sean was, was, and look, we should, we certainly should operate on assumptions, but it's something to consider. If Sean specifically. If Sean specifically specified to them in his discussions with them, hey, I need mulch for a playground, my guess would be that in their professional expertise, they would have thought in advance enough to suggest a product that was child, child safe. Right?
Yeah, it should be child safe, but my concern was the, only one company discussed putting a barrier down, which we currently do not have a barrier down. And, and that's a concern, like you can't just put mulch down without a barrier. And then that same company is the one who said they wanted to spray for weeds and stuff first. So that's my concern, I'm, I'm not comfortable saying yes, go ahead and spray for weeds without knowing what they're spraying. And that they're using the barrier that Lisa thinks is, uh, the best fitted for our, for our location. She knows that park, that playground well enough to know if you put it backwards or upside down, that we're going to have issues pretty quickly.
Yes.
So I, I just took a look, I just pulled the, the, um, the, the proposal actually re, it doesn't talk about the weed killer, the vegetation killer, uh, what specifically. The, it says a, a commercial grade landscape fabric. I don't know what that is, but it would be a matter of a phone call, I, I don't know it would cost you anything, uh, more.
I've laid that myself.
It says playground wood chips, so they are aware that this, it, it's engineered wood for a playground. So that, that should be okay, it's probably Zagler's, um, which is one of the common engineered wood chips that, that they, that you utilize for playground.
That name sounds familiar. That name sounds familiar to me from calling this on.
Yeah, I think the only thing would be is that i- if you want to go with this proposal, that it would be contingent upon the, the, the vegetation, um, killer, that that vegetation killer be, um, conducive to, to playground use. And, and then the, the, um, landscape fabric as they're calling it, we just need to make sure that that's the correct fabric. I don't think it would cost them any more to, for that particular fabric that I'm referring to, we just don't have what they're, they're planning on utilizing.
So I just want to, I want to make sure that I have something clear, because I'm, I think I've gotten a little confused at this point. So the Hagerty's Landscape, which is the proposal you were just talking about, I believe Lisa, with, where it has the, they're doing actual work of putting in the textile and doing the, the, um, the weed killing and installing the playground chips. They're installing playground chips supplied by us from some other vendor.
Correct.
And I think the vend, if I, if I'm understanding the discussion correctly, they didn't have anything to do with the selecting of the vendors for the playground chip, Sean was getting those quotes separately. So I think we still wanted to make sure that, while I trust Sean's judgment generally, I, we just wanted to clarify to make sure that that was the right type of wood chips for that as well as the weed killer and the other things.
So Britain Industries has PEMA certified playground mulch.
Right, that's.
So, so that's the playground, um, certification, so that's, that's the correct mulch.
Okay, and so that's one, we just, that, but the one we were, the lowest price is Holland, we don't have their specific layout here, so Brit, um.
I don't see that, oh, okay, my fault, I'm trying to find this on my phone while I'm.
I was clarifying, because I wanted to make sure I wasn't.
That's why I didn't. Yeah.
Um, so Holland, I don't see a document for Holland, so technically Britain is only ninety-five dollars more with the, the correct certifications. But we want to see if the Holland is the right, correctly certified mulch as well. As start, get, get together all the other stuff from Hagerty's anyway, so we wouldn't be waiting for that, so I don't think it would kill us to wait on the mulch as well, personally.
Alright, sounds good to me, Andrew, can you task Sean with getting those information, that information for us?
Yes, I can.
I mean, I, I think given, like, given what we've determined here, that, I mean, I, I still think we can, I think we could proceed with the motion, I mean, don't. Lisa, didn't you say that you did note that it was mentioned in the proposal? Yeah, Montgomery Park, uh, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with getting this thing rolling, but. Lisa, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I think based on the, the discussion that you've had, because there's confusion with it, I think you're probably best to hold off. It's two weeks, we'll have another meeting, have all of the information, it's not, uh, that mulch, that mulch is, is very easily purchased, so we've got a lot of vendors that, that have that type of a mulch. We can find it if we can't use one of the three that, that Sean has listed here. And then as far as the other stuff, I would definitely make sure that the, the weed killer is the appropriate weed killer for that area, for the use in that area. So I would hold off if, if, if you feel comfortable enough to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I personally think we need to hold off until we have all the information. I hate to wait because it's spring and it's a great time to be down the playground, but I don't want to, um, have to go back and fix a mistake, so. I think it's best if we hold off, make sure we have all the right information and like Lisa said, it's not going to take long. So, um, I think that's it for the Montgomery Park, uh, other than the fact that some residents have brought it to my attention that there is some graffiti on the back wall of the snack bar. I don't know if we have green paint laying around, if we want to go ahead and paint that, um, and there was some, um, drug debris left on the ground. I know Sean has been, uh, working to try to keep that stuff cleaned up. I had recommended maybe that the police do a couple extra loops through there in the evening time. But I don't know if they can, uh, make it a priority to walk behind the snack bar as it seems to be a especially private location um, for people who are doing things they shouldn't be doing down there. In addition, the backboards are ordered and they are backordered, so they should be here within the next two weeks, fingers crossed. And cleanup day is scheduled for Saturday, I have over twenty volunteers that are willing to help out and be there, um, block captains. So, um, look out for that information coming. Unfortunately, the banner was not made well and the grommets tore off, that had to come down. That had to get taken down, um, but hopefully the information's out and people know Saturday, nine to twelve, community cleanup day. There does seem to be a movement to get down to Montgomery Park and get some cleaning up down there. Um, so I may have, uh, captain down there with some, uh, supplies too, which will be great for the park. So, um, we're still looking for someone for land well in area, I don't have a captain for that, if anybody's paying attention and wants to be a captain for land well and gardens. Um, from what I understand, they could really use a captain and supplies down there, so that's it for me for tonight.
What about movie night, Lee, we discussed?
Um, I ha- have been, we were discussing doing movie night in the middle of May. I have decided, um, I think that we probably should push it off for the sole reason that even if we vote on it tonight to do it, getting the vendor, it's short amount of time, I think it's too close to, um, trying to pull it off would be not worth it right now, so we're going to push it back. And we have some fun ideas for what movie night will look like, hopefully, uh, with our community day activities that we're starting to plan.
Everybody, hold on one moment, Council President Papaleo's unfortunately lost internet access at Borough Hall. I apologize for the delay, I'm going to work with him to get this up and running.
Should we not, okay? Andrew, do we have any, uh, indication of how long this is going to be?
Hopefully momentarily, he's calling the, uh, he's calling the, uh, Steve right now.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, um, can everybody hear me alright?
Yeah.
Yep.
We're, okay, alright, thank you, alright, where were we? It's somebody, I think we left it, uh, that we were going to table this, I don't know what the council decided in my absence. Um, I think we approved the tree trimming and held off on the, uh, the playground restoration, am I right?
Yes, and I talked.
Mr. Borough Manager, can you?
You're, you're correct, Council President. I believe we may have lost him again.
Are you still there?
We hear you now.
Okay, you call Cobb Cast tomorrow and you tell them they better fix this mess or they gotta go. I can't, we can't work like this. Can everybody hear me?
Got it.
Can we hear, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Not you, Mr. President.
Thank you ma'am, I'm going to leave it at that, moving on to, Councilman Dale, are you, I don't mean to be rude, are you, are you finished with your, with your section? I don't want to cut you off if you still have more business.
No, I kept talking after you left, so I'm good.
Alright, thank you, very good, moving on to Councilman Waters Municipal Legislation.
Looks like.
You're muted. Nick, you're muted.
Sorry about that, so I have no new business.
We, um, there is something on the agenda item, I did, I did intend to have for you a, a template schedule of fees, but unfortunately, there's just too much stuff in there. Um, and, and that's going to have to get pushed off probably, hopefully, hopefully for the first meeting in May.
Okay.
Alright.
I think for the sake of.
Is everybody still here?
Yes, we are, I think for the sake of time, I'm going to just continue the meeting until Joe's connection issues get sorted out, so that we can respect everybody's times for tonight. So, uh, Nick, with that being, that was all you have for it, so we'll move to new construction, which was me anyway. I have not a contract that is signed with a, as I guess they call it, a wet signature, but I have a scan of the contract, the contract is on its way. There was some confusion, it got accidentally taken down to the shore, so it wasn't available to be, to be delivered today. But I do have, um, we do know that the contract has been signed, so we should have that tomorrow, according to, um, the contractors. In addition to that, they have given kind of.
Alright folks, I'm back on, sorry about that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, we're using my data plan.
Yeah.
So I think we were, Kyle, I, I hate to cut you off, were we in your section here?
I, we just were, we just, I was going to say, um, they should be getting us a schedule as far as, um, kind of a, their timeline for things as well with that. The rough timeline that was described to me on the phone was that they should be able to start site work in about two weeks after mobilization. So hopefully, um, you know, first week in May, we should be, uh, good to start with that, um, initial site work. Um, but we need to wait until we have it, they were actually trying to cut that down. Though I don't imagine how you can mobilize that quickly, but they wanted to try to do it faster than that. Um, as soon as we have that information, Lisa, you will have it in hand, because I know you, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys are going to handle a lot of the, um, oversight of the actual construction work itself, correct?
Yeah, I'd like to, once, once we know you have that in hand, I want to supply them with their notice to proceed. That starts the clock rolling for the, for the amount of time they have to complete the project.
Okay.
Or we'll, we'll start that time clock, uh, they'll, they'll be able to give us any submittals that they have, so that we can get those reviewed and back to them.
Yep, so as soon as I have the, we have all the, we, we have the actual signed document in front of us, you will have that information, so that you can move forward with what you need to do. As far as that stands, that is where we are at, once we have that rolling, the contract is for, um, a year's worth of time. So the project by contract should be done a year from that, uh, first week of, uh, May, if that it, well, as soon as we have the contract ready, so that's kind of where we're sitting at with that. Otherwise, that is all I have for the new construction.
Alright, uh, moving on to the parking permit paving committees, Councilman Willis.
Um, Andrew, I apologize because I have, the, you've given me information about the, uh, appraisals and it has, uh, left my head, if you correct me if I go um, off the reservation a little bit on this, but I believe the appraiser had done all the measuring work and done all that stuff to get the values for the, the general um, easement values for the driveways, but they were now pulling up, um, titles to go through the actual easement language and all that stuff, uh, as a part of their appraisal, correct?
Um, I, I actually don't know that he's finished all of the measurements, he was, uh, I met with him and, uh, engineer Lisa Catania back in, uh, uh, Lisa, this is last week, I believe, right?
If I could just add, I think they were doing measures, measurements on the odd side of, um, of, of Grant Road. Are they doing measurements on the eight, nine hundred block of the even side as well, because the even side was the one that I had, uh, directed for targeting?
Yes, they've been specifically told that. They, we explained why that intersection, and I've spoken to Kevin about this several times, why that particular block has all of the different, um, you know, the.
Types.
houses and, um, I remember, for example, Lisa mentioned that, um, you know, where we had specifically met didn't have that entrance point off of the road, we had to get access from behind those. I'm not at saying this very well, so Lisa, feel free to jump in, um, you may notice I'm not an engineer.
I'm not going to say it in engineer's language anyway, because I don't know if I know any engineer's language that, that describes it. The areas where the lot actually has the, the driveway entrance off of the roadway, down the long side of their property and then behind their property. So we don't have that situation, but we wanted to make sure that Kevin was aware that that was something that he ought to take a look at. Our office went online. We have access to any deeds that are available from sales from the last 20 years. If it's earlier than that, we don't have them. So anything that we could pull to assist Kevin, we pulled, there were about 14 of them that we got for him and I emailed those over. There's copies of those. Andrew has a set of them as well. So they are moving forward. I don't know what he was measuring. I left while he was measuring the even side of, of Grant, but I don't know how far I went on the other side.
So we are waiting for those assessments. Andrew, and Alex, you can correct me if you still need this or not, but can we get some of that, at least one of those needs over to Alex so that he can read the language of the easement? You had wanted to see that, correct?
Yeah, I haven't seen one yet.
So if we can get some examples of that over to Alex so that he can take a look at that easement language as well, because that's an important step as well. But that's where we are at with that portion. We are finalizing the ordinance. Is that, we're still in the process of working on that, correct, Alex?
Yeah, I think it's done. Last week, you and yourself and Lee had responded to the couple of questions and red lines I had to it. So I think we're good on that. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's done and the advertisement's ready to go too. So we'll pump that out next week. Unless you guys have any more comments or changes, I think we're ready to go.
No, I believe so. So that process is moving forward as well. So we should be ready to get that advertised and approved as well. So I mean, we're moving along, just kind of an update as to where we're at.
Good stuff. All right, is that all we got for parking? Actually, that's, that's quite a bit and it's good and work. Is that all we got for you on that segment?
Yes, that is all I have for parking.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on to the Police Chief's report, Police Chief Bear.
Yes, Mr. President and Council, thank you very much. I just want to go over a little bit of stuff. We did go over to committee meeting, the tunnel and the McTire arrest. There are two nice arrests by two of our officers. We had a shooting, shots fired about a week and a half ago. We are filing charges on a suspect with that. It is at the DA's office getting approval, so that's good. We are going to be, you know, stopping cars in town for stop signs and we, today we did a little bit of speeders today, just so you guys know. Also, our parking, we are going around looking for abandoned vehicles, inspection emissions, quality of life stuff. So when the weather is getting nicer now, we are going out and doing that. So the residents hear that as well. We will patrol Montgomery Park a little bit more and go around the building and walk around to see if there's anybody back there. We will take that. And also, we want to thank Mr. President and Council for the donation. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you for all you do, chief. We appreciate you and the entire force. Moving on to the Solicitor's report.
I think I kind of touched on everything that I had, except for the fact, to give you an update on the Del Cora matter. We did communicate the council's agreement of settlement, which they accepted. And on the 13th, Councilman Papaleo, I'm sure because you signed the documents or you saw it, that the borough authorized Del Cora to get on to the Montgomery Park property to do the bore testing. That will start their easement construction. So that was out on the 13th. We should have formal easement agreements probably within the next couple of weeks. And at that time, settlement, the first settlement payment for this year will be due, but essentially that matter is wrapped up and just a couple of-
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to the Finance Director's report.
Good evening, everybody. You should have my report. I won't read through it, but if anybody has any questions, they can let me know. I will call Nellie tomorrow and see if we can push the audits along so that we can be eligible for the grants. The problem is we're two years behind, really now three with 2020. So we have a lot of work to do. We've sent Chris a lot of reports, so I'll follow up with him to see what he's missing there. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
All right, very good. Moving to the Borough Manager's report.
So I have sent all of you a report as well. A couple of things I wanted to talk about that have come up since this report was prepared. Relating to code enforcement, currently, so code enforcer Joseph Donnelly's issued a total of 111 fines for various code enforcement, enforcement issues in the month of March. As of my writing this document, that was over about a week ago now, that Mr. Donnelly only issued 19 tickets for the month of April. We are now issuing fines for tall grass. Please, please, anybody listening, get your grass cut. We do not want to find you. He has issued so far in the last two days alone, 43 fines for tall grass and weeds, grass and weeds over six feet tall. It can receive a fine, so I encourage you to get that cut. We've already addressed the, the the matters of the highway department that I wanted to bring up that have come up since then. One thing that has also come up, I was approached by an Upper Darby resident about who has created a 501(c)(3) called Nurses Fighting COVID. This is for, this was originally to provide COVID testing, but I believe, but has since been transformed into a, into a, an organization which would provide COVID vaccines to residents or to people in Delaware County. And their 501(c)(3) was just allocated 2,200 doses of Moderna and Pfizer, mostly Pfizer, from the health department. And they came out to the Borough Hall and visited our, our gym and would like to put on a COVID vaccination clinic for borough residents, although it will be open to anybody in Delaware County, at our gym. And this can be done as soon as next week. So, so when I get a little bit more information about a specific day, hopefully I'll have that within the next two or three days. I'll let you know. Probably only have a couple of days run up, so we could put out a robo-call and what people, residents will call her. And there's a, they've actually have a specific phone line to register, because they, these people all have to get appointments. So they'll call this phone number and they'll be able to register for an appointment. We could put out a robo-call to borough residents, put it on social media. And I, I suspect that we could get 200 people. They'll also be, this would be for both shots, as everybody receives the two doses of the vaccine for, for Moderna and Pfizer. So this would be for both doses, so they'd have to come back. There would have to be a second event four weeks later at Borough Hall as well. And we could actually do several events potentially here.
I think that's an awesome idea.
That's actually great. I mentioned that a few weeks ago and it was defined what happened between that.
Say that again, Councilman Waters?
I mentioned that a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and people were vaccinated at a jail.
Yeah. At the time, I think there just weren't enough doses that the county's been allocated more and more and more and more. Now we've been allocated huge numbers of, of the vaccine. So it's really come into effect and, you know, even a couple of weeks ago, we didn't have the same numbers. It just wasn't available. Relating to COVID in the borough, since our last meeting, they're now, now a total of 8.64% of borough residents have tested positive for COVID-19. That's since March 2020, for a total of 573 cases. It's an increase of 59 cases since my last Borough Manager's report to council in March. Of these cases, the borough, six borough residents have now passed away as a result of COVID-19, which is unfortunate. However, it represents no increase from the previous month. And that's it.
All right, very good. So that, that, that vaccine clinic sounds great. Alex, do we need to, do we need to make any motions to approve, like Borough resources or real estate for any of this sort of stuff? Or we could just do it?
I'm assuming you would have some kind of memorandum of understanding with the county, which I guess would come from Chester County technically, because Delaware County doesn't have a health department and they partner together. So you wouldn't really need to motion to approve it now. If they send you over some kind of documentation such as that memorandum of understanding to use those facilities, then you could go ahead and approve it at that point.
My understanding is this actually isn't through the county. This is directly through this, this 501(c)(3), and that they actually receive their vaccines directly from the state health department. I have no idea how that interlocks with the Chester County Health Department, but Delaware-
Yeah.
I know it's supposed to be used for Delaware County residents, but-
Look, if I can get 200 vaccines in the arms of Falkruth residents, I ain't waiting for Chester County to tell me it's okay.
No, no, that's perfectly fine. Do they have any more information they can send you, Andrew?
Absolutely.
Yeah, request. Right. I mean, again, you're a municipality and you have to make sure that your insurance is, you know, on board with this to allow the facility. So I just want to make sure you guys aren't getting sued in case the worst possible scenario happens in this. So-
No, that's a fair point. That's a fair point. I guess we just want to, how do we, do we have to wait for the county's approval to make sure we cover that base or?
Well, I don't know if the county is necessarily net, you know, in a position to approve. They might, as Andrew is describing, just give the vaccine to this 501(c)(3) who is then tasked with distributing it. So-
So they've already been provided. They're already in possession of several hundred doses.
Right.
And my understanding, Alex, and I don't know how this interlocks here, is that they're protected from, from litigation or from being sued for giving out the vaccine under, I assume most, I'm sure that doesn't protect everything, but-
But I'm sure there's a waiver. There's got to be a waiver that every recipient signs, right?
I'm assuming so.
There is a form, Joe, you and I filled out one just last week. So there is a waiver and I believe that you have to fill that out before. I mean, there has to be a sign-in table. We've already reviewed that.
Right. Yeah, Andrew, have them submit a little bit more information so we can look at it. Worst case scenario, you guys do have emergency act powers because of the declaration of emergency right now. So you could approve the use of facilities in the interim between now and your meeting in two weeks. And then officially announce, you know, the, the action that you passed on the record during that meeting, if need be. So I just want to make sure everything's above board here.
Awesome. All right. All right, very good. I think, is there anything under old business that needs to be covered? No, I think there was something under new business that me and Nick wanted to talk about. Put the, the idea in my ear that with Juneteenth approaching and June sort of being the target date when we're allowed to start maybe considering public events again. I would like to maybe do some sort of a Juneteenth celebration. I mean, we're the first municipality in, in the, the in the county to recognize it as, as a holiday and to, and to give it our employees off for the day. I think maybe we should, we should, we should toy with the idea of doing something as a community. Does anybody have any thoughts about that? We don't have much time to plan it. We gotta hurry up.
Joe, I came up with the, like the first annual Juneteenth festival celebration for Falkruth. We are one of the first counties to acknowledge it, you know, and make it an official holiday. I like, it's a great idea. Barbecue, balloons, clowns, face painted, the whole show.
What's everybody think? Do we have any, any feedback on that at all? If it's just-
I think it would be great to do something. When is the 19th of June?
It would be on the 19th of June.
I know, what day? I know, I'll get tired, Joe.
Let, let me look here, so it was-
It's a Saturday this year.
Is it? Okay. Yeah.
So I like the idea of what Nick was saying, like barbecue or something like that. I mean, if this is gonna be all of us, you know, especially we get the vaccine clinic next week coming in. By then, everybody will be vaccinated. Those who haven't been will be able to come and get it. And so I think it'll be a fun thing, because I know that if you're fully vaccinated, you're allowed to integrate with everybody else that has been fully vaccinated. You're now to travel, you're now to do, so-
I mean, let's be mindful of the fact that this is-
Of course, of course, with precautions, of course, with precautions.
We're dealing with an ever-moving target here, so we have to be mindful of that. But, I mean, I, I want to do it. I think it's something we should do. Does anybody object us, Nick and I start planning on that or something? No?
I won't be able to help. I have other things going on on the 19th, but just letting you know.
I know, you have, you have a kid graduating from high school. You've got plenty to do. I know. I mean, we're happy to fill the gaps. We might even ask some, some new fresh talent in on the planning process if she's willing.
Are you referring to one of my committee members? My committee, is that what you're asking for? Access to my committee?
It could be. It could be. Is she on your committee?
I mean, I wouldn't just say her. There's about 15 fantastic people on the committee who are probably willing to be part of it. I just can't, I just can't be, I have way too much going on within the beginning of June with a kid graduating.
I know, and with other borough business.
It's a Saturday, so I would definitely be able to help plan and be there. I'll keep that date.
Could we, could you ask any, any of your committee members if they would be interested, Lee?
Yeah, absolutely. You just have to let me know when you want to meet with them or whatever. They do Zoom. We do Zoom once a month. So my next meeting with them is May 6th. If you would like to meet before then, which you probably should, just need to let me know and I'll email you into the link.
Okay, very good. Nick, I will get with you, I'm gonna make a call to you right after this meeting. All right.
Yes, yes.
All right, do we have any other new business to discuss?
No, but we do have old business. Are we not going to discuss fire truck issues? We had, I know that Donna had mentioned on her report that there was money for the fire truck. So I know Kyle's waiting for some information, but we should at least discuss where we're at with that.
So I think my understanding was that Kyle was waiting for some information from the chief. Is that correct?
So right now, we are, and Chief is on, so I mean, he can explain where things are at on his end, but from our conversation, which we spoke last night, right now, actually, the telespart is down right now. Anyway, there is a coolant leak, I believe, in the engine, so that needs to be taken care of. Anyway, he spoke to the service company that does this, does the repair work for it, Halo Service, I believe. If I remember correctly, and they would be able to do a kind of full workup on what is an issue with the truck, top to bottom, front to back. And I believe it was only, I think it was a couple hundred dollars. And I apologize to not take the notes or don't know where I put my notes from that conversation. I think it was like $300 to just do the full inspection. So we would know every little knot and bolt that was a problem with the truck, so we would have a good idea of what we were dealing with. And then I don't know. I believe I needed to get, I also got the name of the service companies for our treasurer, so they could look up a couple more charges. Now they were looking up how much we've spent in the past couple of years on repairs for the truck, just so we can have an idea of how much the maintenance on this truck has been in the past. So we have an idea of how much it would cost to continue to maintain and upkeep it. If we were to choose to try to do recertification or something along those lines, just so we have all the information in front of us. That was where I was at with my investigations. So I don't know if we had gotten a, a number for how much we spent on the truck repairs.
Did you see my email, Kyle? Because I said to maybe go to the service department, because there's no way, from, from an accounting standpoint, that we would know.
To distinguish between the trucks. Right, I do remember that. Yes, they were, that, thank you for reminding me. So yeah, so we, Tom was, Chief Weber was also going to discuss with the company that's been doing the services to get the copies of the invoices from them so that we can have from who we spent the money to how much we've spent to them as a more direct record, so we could look at it that way. And that is where I was at with my bits of investigation.
Okay.
All right, so we're, can, can everybody still hear me? Hello? Sorry about that. The, the internet connection's horrible in here. Um, is there any other new business? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
All right, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, entertain a motion from the body of council to adjourn the meeting. I need a.
I made the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Good night, everybody.
You too. Thank you.